Well, welcome everybody to the work session.
Yes.
This is actually going to be our third work session, so the same topic but just having more discussion. And I will turn it over and just let you know that we do have the drawings that we've had before here and we'll be projecting all the information that will be discussed. So appreciate to Y Dan and Barton Co. being here and we'll let Dana begin. Thank you again.
Thank you. Gentlemen, not a lot new obviously for tonight. What we have done is our best to make gymnasiums and support spaces for the gymnasiums as identical as possible in all three options. So just a refresher, the decision's already been made. Sixth grade moving to the high school, junior, senior high school. Where does that leave Shark Creek and how do you deal with that? We developed three options. None of these options are probably what you'll end up doing in the end, but hopefully it's a variation of one of them. Thought being this is just a way to help you make a big, high-level decision and then begin to drill down as we work through that. So beyond that, as I said, we've tried to make the junes and the support spaces all as similar as possible. If you look at option one, that's renovating Shark Creek. Obviously with that comes the issues that go along with trying to renovate a building that you're occupying. Thought being you might build a gym, create temporary classrooms, shuffle kids around as you renovate spaces. At the end of the day, we gain a larger cafeteria than what you currently have, a larger kitchen than what you currently have, a new gym, a new office, two new classrooms, and 17 renovated classrooms. And I don't know if you want to jump back into the revised costs on each option or you want to go through the three options first and then come back to the costs.
I can just run through the options.
Okay, we'll do that that way. So option two is tearing down Shark Creek and renovating and expanding Metro North. Here, the notion is generally to add two classrooms to each of the three pods, a preschool wing out to the north, tear down the existing kitchen, build a gym out that way with its locker rooms, build a new gym on the west side of the existing cafeteria, use that existing wearwash dressing area that was originally built for the gym, expand that, move the office into that so it becomes front and center. Whether you bring people in and clear it at the south end or you take them partway up through before you bring them into the space, gives you some variation in how you address the whole secure entrance thing that way. Nice thing about this one in my mind is it gains you now, what was I up to here? In this option, we end up with 12 new classrooms, new gym, new kitchen. So as you're kind of thinking about what goes into this and what you're paying for. Along with a lot of site management. What you would still have left over in this option is your existing shop wing at the high school that is in need of some physical attention. So then option three is tear down Shark Creek and add on to Northfield, junior, senior high. The approach here was to tear down the existing shop classes, shop areas, grab the classroom on the northwest corner, turn that into the office and a new entrance right there at that corner exit. Bring people in into the north. We're looking at 14 new classrooms there, new gym and locker rooms. And then because your CTE programs have a slightly different flavor now than they did when the current building was constructed, we would come down to the southwest corner and add on space there designed for the way ag or whatever program you guys want to introduce would be taught. Currently, I think we're showing about 1,100, 1,200 square foot spaces there. I forget exactly. That was just a place holder to put a number on it, but we could put whatever you want there. I think Chris and Tim both made the comment, as long as we have access to the parking lot for overhead doors, we can make it work wherever you put it. So that was the approach to this one. I think initially we had sort of left with the locker rooms, those pink ones on the right side. We had left those tucked back a little bit or pulled them around so we didn't create an isolated courtyard in the middle. But this has worked through now a couple of iterations. We stretched that out and connected the new gym to the existing varsity gym entrance so that in theory you can connect all of your PE spaces together and use them more in units. In this option, obviously Metro North would then turn into a PK two. You probably didn't have quite so many PK rooms as you did in the last option, but kindergarten, first grade, and second grade could each move into the pods with the spare room or special needs could get split apart or however that works best for that curriculum. So it's pretty high level, pretty quickly through, but I think you guys have looked at these enough. You probably have a pretty fair notion of what I'm talking about. So I don't need to be redundant and waste your time. Questions?
Yeah, I have questions. Always have questions, I guess, before we get to the numbers. If by chance Dana, this Northfield location would become a K-12 campus, should we look at more of a master-type plan to even add more spaces on here that are rather than, I used the term the other day, tacking on, tacking on.
Circle.
I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm not saying it's the direction we're heading. But if the money is going to be spent at Northfield, then someday Metro North might be moved there. As that is a frequent statement I make towards in corporations that are declining in population. Not knowing when that's going to level out, hopefully plateau, but I always tell them, what's the last building you would abandon? And it's always the high school. So we begin to talk about how does a build-out occur if at the end of the day you become a K-12 building? Now, saying that, some of the things you need to keep in mind, right now you're a three-section elementary. At the point you would actually become a K-12, you might be down to a two-section elementary at that point. So the build-out to extend and bring a few more classes over might not be as big as you'd think. But in this situation, I think you'd have to give some consideration to the smaller the kids, does that same big gym space still work for them? Probably. Does the cafeteria work for them? That's probably more questionable. And you want to think about how you deal with that. Yeah, so definitely. I think there's real value in saying, if this is the option we're considering pursuing, we should take a much deeper dive into what might it look like in the future. I guess that's where I'm going, to take a step back and build flexibility into it or at least try and have that flexibility there of some type. But I don't know how that would be, whether it'd be in consideration of roof lines and extending utilities and things like that or not.
Nope, all those things are pertinent.
You mentioned the other day, I think you did, that you were involved with added central fieldhouse.
No, we didn't do added central fieldhouse. You guys did.
You did.
Okay.
Is there a value of a fieldhouse style over adding the third gym that was at the Northfield site? What would that involve? It would involve more square footage and a higher peak interior like a rafter angle?
It's all a matter of what you want to do within the space.
More to heat, but I didn't know if it offered something for, let's say, the counters, seasonal sports like football and baseball to be able to do inclement weather, practice indoors.
All those are, again, they're pertinent questions.
It wouldn't fit in that space there probably.
Or could you move more to the west though?
Can I jump to the site plan, please? Other way. So... Yes, okay. The more we move north and west, obviously we crunch up against softball field. At some point, from a cost perspective, though, moving the softball field might be more responsible than limiting how you address your issues.
Well, certainly a fieldhouse would be more expensive to heat if you wanted to maintain a gym-type temperature, which they usually don't. But it offers also, it offers something for the community too. I think going through sports with four kids living in gyms.
So if you're thinking about more of a communal aspect to that facility, we definitely want to probably get that from the back of the building so it's easier to access, segregate now rather than be an integral loop. Just thinking. Now, if you, once you begin to focus on one option or two, certainly begin to drill in those things more.
Yeah. But it does come into play though if you think you could do more here and it attracts you to make the decision toward here.
Well, that's where the numbers come into play. What are you getting for what you're paying for?
Part of the discussion last time was the size of the gym and making sure that there was an adequate representation of that. And those are, the gym that you have, what was it, about 13 eight? 13 and a half, really? Which is just a tad bigger than what our current main gyms will be, which would at least give you a couple of extra courts. And obviously you could build bigger if you wanted to add a third court onto that.
I'm not sure you need a whole lot more square footage to literally get three courts. It becomes more a matter of how we structure seating. The seating pool may be across one of those courts so that you can watch two of them.
Well, I don't want to get away from the academics and just say we're building gyms. But you also want to get the most bang for your buck to get there.
If you do this, you still need the gym, better cafeteria, Metro North. At least one of those.
At least would be additional space.
Additional space, right, not necessarily one of each.
Is the cafeteria sufficient? So it's just whole cafeteria?
I mean, I'm, the kitchen.
The kitchen would be sufficient, I would believe.
With the same, we're not changing it, right?
With not adding any grade levels, not be sufficient. It's a space because they have to take down the chairs and tables after and before early lunch because there's activities. And then it doesn't really give them a space when they, there's bad weather outside for indoor recess. And so...
Especially at lunchtime.
Right. So an additional space of some sort would be beneficial.
And I think some of the costs that will be discussed will play into that too as far as which route we go.
I'm not going anywhere. You can call me back after. I'll turn it over to Dana.
Well, with regards to the numbers, basically what we did on all three of them is what we mentioned before here. We made sure that the gymnasium size and the locker room size was consistent among all three of them. The last estimate we did prior to this one, there were different gym sizes. And then after our discussion at the last meeting and making sure we don't underbuild and the desire to have 600 seats and so forth, we just made sure even though the drawings may not necessarily show a 13,000 or a square foot gym, we went ahead and budgeted that knowing that whatever option you may choose to move forward with, the drawings would probably eventually incorporate that size of a gym. So that was the main difference between this estimate and the one we had before. Where there was a change because of a scaling issue on the drawings was the Northfield Elementary budget. That number actually dropped because of the scale on the drawings that I was originally using was smaller and I was taking off too much square footage. And when I got the correct scale from Barton Co., I did a complete takeoff on that school again and the square footage that was shown on the drawings, the actual numbers actually went down in terms of square footage. And that's why you saw a pretty decent drop in the projected cost for the Northfield site. So that's, you know, not to reiterate everything I said at the last meeting, those are the primary changes that took place between the last meeting we had and where we are today.
There's about 3.3 difference between option two and three.
So that discussion about Metro North, not to put you on the spot, but just to add space to Metro North to take care of that gym cafeteria situation. Can you throw up a figure or square foot that you could use and just to give a little rough estimate?
What would we be doing there? Putting on another gym?
Honestly, I guess I would suggest we put on another cafeteria and use the existing space for the gym. You don't need the volume.
So a cafeteria, square foot, how much square footage?
So can you just, how would you, you would, yeah, just try to think, how would you add that on?
Well, it can even go to the, can it go to the south or there's room, you can go to the, not to the, go to the west, but go to the south.
Just to the south.
Gym?
I knew that two weeks ago.
Well, look at the, yeah.
We have to walk through the gym to get the...
Well...
2,000 feet.
2,000 square feet is all we need?
Yeah, I mean, we take, for the size of cafeteria, we take the total number of lunches served, divide it by three. It's about three periods that, over an hour and a half, two hours to serve all the kids. So that's about 100 kids at a time. Five out of 15 square feet per student, that's 1,500 square feet plus 500 square feet of hallway circulation, you know, aisle space. We're around 2,000, 2,500 square feet.
I was just wondering if there were, because obviously looking at where, what we were going to do there, if we went that option, I had been thinking about this, but I, you know, where the existing locker rooms are, that storage space, if there would be a way, because you got your, you already got your, where they clean all the, you know, trays and all that. It's right there. There's a way that you could come off to the east of there and build a cafeteria in the, and maybe enlarge that space is what I was getting at.
We can probably extend that space south to about flush with the south wall of the existing cafeteria and get pretty close to the square footage you want. That way we don't mess up your roof lines in there.
Well, that's what I, yeah, I just didn't want something thrown on there.
You don't want to get in the weeds too much, but just to give, that's one thing that we wanted to try to help to set that situation, so.
It's me with like $350 square foot, 2,000 square feet.
So...
That's 700,000.
Well, then you have to add on contingencies, design fees, soft costs, which is about a 50% factor. So here's 750,000 times a 1.5. All-in cost, about 1,100, 1,200.
That sounds about right because you're about two classrooms and any more, I think your classroom is right around $1,500.
There's a 3.3 million dollar difference between option two and three. So I was trying to this on Facebook, but it wasn't you, it was probably you. So you asked that question about fieldhouse. What was the answer? Not a lot of square foot difference.
I don't know there'd be a whole lot of square footage difference. We've done two or three really snug three-court fieldhouses where we squeezed 500, 600 seats in. They pull across maybe the end court, but the middle court then becomes the one that you use for a competition or a program or whatever.
And what size is that, what size square footage?
Trying to remember. I gotta pull off locker rooms and the things that, weight wrestling rooms and stuff that got stuck on to the end of them, but 100, about 170?
It's just one of those things I was thinking about. Hate to do this and then, oh, I wish we would have added. It's obviously probably cheaper now to put another 40 feet on than to come six years down the road and put 40 feet on. So it's...
Which was my point. You, at this point, you're trying to get to where are we? Are we going to renovate Shark Creek? Are we going to expand Metro North? Or are we going to expand Northfield? It's not going to look like what I showed you. I can promise you that. Because you'll think of a lot of other things as you're working through this that might tend to tweak the way things get put together or that actually gets included. I think last time we talked about 14 classrooms in the Northfield option. It's really possible that somehow art music for the elementary become an adjunct to existing art and music in junior high and high school. Well, now I don't necessarily need rooms in the elementary for that, but you might have some other use in the elementary. You might want to develop their own media center rather than use the existing one. We'll have a lot of conversations like that. And those will all be different depending on which option. So remember for our process.
I noticed on this last paper has a cost for movement, it's course, I worked through the last one, but it's, that was just an option that was added.
Mostly because of the playground.
Right. It depends on where you would put the playground.
Playgrounds, I don't like. Yeah.
Right there by the softball field. Throw off, park lot, they have it there. That's one reason, just a good option.
So new playgrounds, we can do that. Yeah.
Yeah, we have a $200,000 allowance for an added playground.
Do they use those playgrounds? I think.
Yeah. They probably use more of block top area.
Well, all I hear from my kids is, yeah, they don't ever use that stuff. It's always all, you know, something related to...
Because you've got to think fun stuff like swings, they slide.
Monkey bars.
Exactly. All the cool stuff.
Well, yeah. As we start working our way through here, I just go ahead and put my cards on the table. I am not too fond of the renovation of Shark Creek. I'd rather consider options two and three at that.
It's a choice. And we're also talking over $8,000, $100,000 they want to hit on.
We might have thought that.
You know, probably from the beginning, I've always thought about what would look like in 20 years. So that's why I, my head just keeps pushing towards the Northfield option. Because I, well, like you said, usually the last thing you eliminate is the high school. It's not like we're increasing the population. Even if we don't, if we stay stagnant, then we're still safe. But I feel like the other way, you push all those classrooms there and then you dig go down and you're like, you still have to keep up those, those facilities. Not a choice at that point.
Apart from the facilities, I wish, I think how the academics play in diversity ages and the community feeling towards, you know, student ages and buildings and...
That's why I have thought about what the Northfield is. And if we did do that option, we have to figure out almost a way to make sure that's its own building, you know, treat it as its own building. You know, we, in a, in a different, you know, in its own way. Obviously the cafeteria issue, that thing is going to have to be there. You know, obviously they're going to walk through the hallways of Northfield, but we're going to have teachers with them at that point.
How the scheduling would fit for that cafeteria period?
That's the only time I ever see it, being, anything crossed, really. I mean, everything else can be, they got their own gym, they got their own facility, they got their own playground, everything's out there.
Not very many times, but obviously the auditorium, when they, that's the advantage of that too. Having, that's the, it's already an advantage there. If this would be a model that would be south also, that obviously would help them a lot too to have the auditorium. Even though like we discussed, the auditorium, still the size of it, still doesn't take care of everything, but it's still a lot better than what we have on smaller elementary gyms.
Does it help staffing in ways, Mr. Gray, from having elementary teachers in proximity to a junior high classroom?
You'll share, you'd be able to share more specials or more electives. Those teachers might be able to serve us like real. Going to the students, so you guys have talked about it before, having the older kids with the little kids in our, in our community is always, it's a plus. People tend to get nervous and think about all the bad things with it. So many of our kids volunteer to read, they become interns, they spend time with the little kids. So, and then with the sharing of custodial staff and sharing with other administrative staff, it's hard to predict what that looks like until there's more, more details carved out. But it certainly wouldn't hurt, it certainly would boost. We've heard on the parent's side too, that the convenience of that too, more students at the location, it becomes more convenient. That's not why we do it, but yeah, that's just another positive.
How many plus, how many students are like the seniors, juniors and seniors? How many of them are like student teachers or...
You know, Casey Dyson has a pretty good selection. I want to say she has five, ten, maybe they go down there. I'm not sure that's... You know, Casey Dyson has a pretty good selection, I want to say she has five, ten, maybe they go down there, I'm sure that fluctuates. But right now, it's a bit of a hindrance, they have to go in the car drive out of Metro North and do stuff. So if it was something they can do for one period rather than miss due, you might pick up some more. And you might have other teachers, English teachers, social studies teachers that might incorporate more of that if it's.
So can the student teacher or the student classify basically as what we usually hire as higher professionals?
Well, I don't know, it would be.
I guess it's an option. Well, I'm just, I know we have to hire them all the time, and we're usually, it seems like we're always looking for.
They sort of provide support services where they, where they go now.
So I just didn't know that could substitute if we ever were in lack, if those students could fill that gap.
Depends on the timing of their classes. The classes they have and the day and the issues that we covered and.
Having an A would give you all they cover as a student. I give you a word, taking film holds and stuff. My personal, I know cost more, I like the idea of a separate place with the kids. I don't, you know, you have parents say, well, it's nice to have them all in the same building. You still got K three, two down here, I got a second grader, you know, fourth grade, so now I got two buildings anyway. That's gonna change as the kid grows, no matter where you're at, if you have two or three kids, those, two years apart, that's, they're gonna be different buildings. So I don't base a lot on that, I just like the idea of the younger kids being a group more so. It also leads you an option to Northfield too, to put on a fieldhouse or save the growing population. All of a sudden, you've done that, you've done yourself, you're still gonna have two buildings. How are you gonna, that's just, those are things I think. There's needs of both places. You know, cafeteria gym area. Would you ever see, that's been kind of discussed a little bit, would you ever see though, having just one campus though?
No. That's not school, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, old school, not necessarily old, old school for us, but not old school for other schools like the Rossvilles and the Castons and the Prepper and all those schools that have a, they basically just have one campus.
But to do that, you're gonna have to add on a lot further. You're gonna have to add on another Metro North there.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying now.
Where do you fit it in? And again, I don't disagree with Matt on that, that scenario, like my brain just keeps going twenty years.
That's where I always have my, my brain that runs through.
But that is a big decision though, because if you go one way or the other, that will possibly limit that future twenty year, thirty year. Have you guys heard anything? I mean, if anybody has listened, if anybody said anything? Anybody? Or?
Is it going in front of my family?
No, yeah, actually anybody that's part of our school district.
Well, I heard from an individual that was concerned about keeping the kids separate at those ages, if they ended up going to Northfield, as long as they were separate, they're good.
And that's the same thing we talked about last year when we talked about how we were gonna do the configuration of our pre-K through eighth grade. That discussion actually changed a lot, and we said, there are positives out there too with that, positives of having those students closer. But they would definitely be on their own schedule, they would be in their own rooms, like, kind of like what you were talking about earlier, right? It's not like they're gonna pass the hallways if they do very often at all, then probably the teachers, the little ones would be the teachers. Just because a forty-five minute period for a high school kid, that just doesn't translate into that much. So it just would be very different. So it wouldn't be segregated or isolated or whatever you want to say, a lot. If you change that option.
Shark Creek option is how much? So eight?
Eight point five, eight point four.
More than the Northfield?
Oh, more than. That's the Northfield. Twenty-four. Little one makes one more.
Well. About a point or one difference from the Metro North. Probably recommendations from architects, destruction, maintenance, probably would be just like we said, that option one would not be considered at all.
I didn't want to run ahead of any kind of strike or anything.
Minimum, that's what, a lot of money.
May I add?
Yeah, let's add, let's listen to Dave on this one.
If you're, if the Northfield option is one you want to seriously consider, I might suggest you reach out to East Allen officials. They've only, they brought K six to their junior highs at Woodland and at Heritage about five or six years ago. So they've got a pretty fresh understanding of what that means and how their communities accepted it. I do know that at Heritage, the elementary students eat in a, in the gym, they have their separate little gym and they eat there. At Woodland, the kids literally march the length of the building to go to the cafeteria.
You said East Allen, right?
That's the, that's Maryland.
So those are K to twelve campuses?
Woodland and Heritage are K twelves.
They just moved up to K six to make it.
They moved the K six to the junior senior high in both cases. Said about five or six years ago, I think, Woodland built to do that, to accommodate, both of them did, yeah. Not unlike what you're looking at here. So they might have some relevant, what it meant for curriculum, how they function throughout the day, if they had it to do again, how would they do it different?
I don't know if they're on the screen.
It's a different. Versus the folks that have like a castle, who've been K twelve since day one.
In Rossville, Jim Hannah is the one that I talked to when we had those concerns last year, and, you know, he was willing for us to put people on the bus and go take a little field trip if anybody wanted to. So I'm sure he would offer that again today. He does have a charter, does he have a school?
Well, I know, I know two things that I've read up to since that, that they moved their kids from what we have to Rossville. So that was an indication that there's, there's some strength that goes along with that.
He started from pre-K and you just walked in the building and go out the other end.
Yeah, I mean, the main thing is, is they like the school, the school district, but they also, they also, you know, thought that was positive, that so.
Well, I think we're in a, I think either way, we're in a win-win situation, but choosing the best option. Heartland? Yeah.
Well, I've, I've been, if we whip the Northfield idea, you know, even what I thought was, you know, if we would go with the new high school last year. Is Heartland, Preers Center always struggles or they, they don't have space, short space. And so I, you know, thinking about how we could help subsidize that space, you know, in our area, there at Northfield, you know, either adding on, because those two rooms that we were talking about. Or we just use that space as, you know, for space for Heartland, because they think they have at least the nursing program. They don't hold, you were saying that.
They were planning on putting on two to three classrooms if we could, but there again, that runs into other school districts where they're, where they want to spend that kind of money. Do that, you know, we got an eighteen dollar upgrade to get the facilities just up, up to snuff. And then that's without adding any classrooms. You know, a couple of years ago, that's all we were worried about was adding classrooms. Now we're looking at, well, let's get the heat, the ventilation, HVAC and all that stuff correct before we do this. So I don't know how you're gonna get other schools to add more money for that to work. It's gonna be pulling teeth to get the rest of it.
Oh, I was, I was getting that, we paid for it.
Right, rented.
Like, like they were doing with the fall match.
If you can get enough rent money for this, well, this with the whole project, because the building costs too much for, but they have that whole building. And these would be classrooms.
These would just be two or three classrooms, is what I was getting, I, and I'm just trying to, because I'd like to get the ag department from Heartland out there.
I follow what you're saying there.
I'm, I would, you know, if we're not gonna, if we're taken away a little bit, I'd like to get it so we can maybe strengthen some of that area.
Is there any kind of?
Support, you want to get that, it's supporting that ag area.
Do we run into any kind of restrictions on doing something like that or building spaces? Leasing back or whatever it's called?
I don't think so. We would have to definitely, we'd have to definitely investigate that.
Well, I understand. Conversations with how the monies are.
The board, have you guys heard of anything like that before as far as, they do that right now, a lot of schools, they don't have necessarily, they have, you know, their, their programming is different, high schools go for different things, so I'm sure that there are, there are setups like that, I don't know how the monies are transferred and how that all works, but you know, Huntington, for example, they have their own, they come to us, they pay, you know, those, they pay a pervian, and then also they go to other school districts for other programs, and so there has to be some agreement that's worked out, I just don't know what that is, we haven't been involved with it.
Because did, did not Heartland rent the space from all that, so there hadn't been some kind of agreement?
There was some sort of agreement, yeah, I don't know.
But that was kind of connected with IT tech and the setup. And we were kind of used to IT tech's canvas, which was that, but that's no longer there.
So correct me, but if we, if we fund Heartland building space, it's around thirty-eight percent is MSP.
Based off the current formula now, yes, it's all based off the S values or it could be more, could be less. But it's around thirty-eight percent right now.
Could go lower if it maybe gets there.
Well, I understand Scott's point.
Yeah.
Scott's point, you know, if you're building space and you want to build aggressively, that's the wrong term. If, if you want to build.
Build appropriately?
Yes, build a little bit above appropriately, you know.
Aggressively.
And you're already paying for forty percent of it if it's built someplace else. Why not build it on your farm?
It makes sense. When you look at it like that.
The difficulty you would have, who's in charge of those kids? A separate, is it gonna come through our principals? Who's gonna drop those kids off, what, where are they gonna come in?
So, okay, how do kids get to?
Anaster. They drive them, so they get dropped off at Heartland and Heartland takes them out there?
So it would be.
Because they don't.
So do we, so does Heartland pay Anaster, or do you know?
No, that's just part of Heartland, Heartland's responsibility.
No, I'm saying to rent their space out there.
At the university?
Yes.
Oh, I don't know.
They probably do, but one thing I do know is though, for the Honeywell, at Eagles, that is a program we have and Heartland does pay her back, so there is. And I'm not gonna say that, I, I think I know what it is, but I don't know, I'm not the same, but I don't know for sure.
I don't.
I think I know it, but.
Well, I just know, that's why I'm saying is they're, they're going up there.
There's an agreement that's made between, there's an MOA.
I think they like go up there once a week.
Once a week.
We have to mention.
Yeah.
But Eagles Theater though, they go.
They go daily, yes.
And there is, they do.
They, there's a rent for that, yes. That's, that's my only ideas, I guess number one, we're, we're kind of trashing the ag department out there if we do that. But I, so I'd like.
Building part of it.
But, well, but I'm just saying, I'd like to see if we can strengthen it somehow.
Yeah.
In a different area, because Heartland, I think, does a great job with that stuff, but I'd like to support it somehow. Maybe give them additional space.
It's an idea that that's, if that's what we, if that's what's chosen and re-upon to investigate that. Because really after we start talking about that, yeah, there, there has to be something because it happens everywhere, so. And just like we said, Eagles Theater, there is a payment to that.
There's a payment to Honeywell. You could probably run off that same formula, see what that is.
But they get a lot of bang for the buck because they get. Well, state of the yard of everything.
Yeah, yeah.
At least the technology now.
Yeah. Are you good?
Questions more for Dave, Dave, do you see prices escalating as much as they've been? Do we see any plateauing, do we see any kind of leveling all over?
Well, the, the first part of the year, on a monthly basis, it's been about point one percent. But the last two months, it's been point five of one percent. So we've actually seen a little bit of a spike the last two months. We're waiting to get August's indexes. But there is still, you know, that probably that three to six percent escalation every year that we're, that we're anticipating now. So, yeah, we don't necessarily see things leveling level or declining, we still see a little bit of a tick going on.
Are we still at the very highest level, or are we down a little bit from where it spiked earlier?
Well, we, we've tracked cost indexes all the way back to nineteen ninety.
Okay.
And there's one year where it actually went negative, it was two thousand and eight, and it went down like point nine percent. Every year since then, it's either leveled off or it's gone up.
So we have still peaked then, that's where it peaked right now.
I don't see, I don't think you're gonna ever see a big dip in the, in the cost, it's a matter of how much is it gonna go up?
Purchase of the money is more of my concern.
No.
Oh, yeah, interest rates. We're still historically low, but yet we're higher. At least we were last.
On interest rates?
Yes.
Oh. I don't know.
Those are.
We had the graph from last year.
Have moderated.
Well, I'm saying historically, like many years ago. How do you store this?
Yeah, seventy-eight.
Sixty percent. Not for bond, but for more trades.
Well, what do you mean from us, Ben, a decision of some kind, right? Whether you keep going around in the circle? Do you like, we always do a little later, or what do you want to learn next? You gotta think about this and have questions. I'm sure Dave's like we are, we'd love to do this, we could wait three or four months before we get started on it, so.
Yeah. Well, like. Is there still a timing issue on when you want to sell bonds and all that kind of stuff?
So, we're gonna be selling bonds for our current projects that we're gonna come up with in the next month or so. But we would like to sell lots again in twenty twenty-four.
And some of the.
For, for a bigger project. But partly on when we start, depends on when you want to take the bonds out in twenty twenty-four, I guess. In my mind, I would like to do it sooner than later, but.
I won't speak for Dana, but if that's something you want to do by the end of next year, we probably need to get rolling there.
Well, and we need to do it too, though, we have Steve and Tony here too, and you know, we do have things that we need to decide because of Shark Creek and some things that need to be done, and so.
Yeah, to prepare, yeah.
Right, what's to prepare then, just to make sure that we can keep taking the HVAC going and things like that, right, Steve?
That's right.
Band-aids.
Band-aids, yeah. They did a great job with all that, though. But cannot continue. Or make a lot larger band-aids. Tumble band-aids. So, yes, we would like, encourage the board to, and all of us to make the decision.
Perfect world, I would say, calm down in early spring and start in late summer, early fall. In late summer, early fall.
So from the time.
We did ask those questions earlier.
In a perfect world.
This is twenty twenty-four, yes. We'll get some shovels out and.
From the time you say go until the time you award it, it's nine, twelve months.
So we're, yeah, so we'll make a decision here shortly, then I can have to play somewhere. That's twelve months. No pressure. We've been talking about it a long time. All right, well, we have another meeting coming up here.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Again. We'll stay in touch. Shut her down.